Let's begin with the pledge. Let's get the wire on here.
And this is for Kent.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, everybody. We have the agenda before us. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
We've done by nine.
I approve.
Paul's second. We have a motion to second to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. We have minutes from four twenty. They were in our packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April twentieth.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes as printed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Comments in the public? Anybody that wants to say anything for the downed agenda? Gary?
I don't know. This D D two. I've got this big sack of wood out there yet that you could move over to again, you know. Somebody's been out there and dug and digging, I don't know. I don't know. Can't seem to get this D D two to step. Marcel's been contacted. They're gonna be planting means in the next few days. It's right along the road. And they dug it up. You can see what's going on. Are you guys gonna take a little road trip today? Looking at roads?
I think our agenda, yeah.
Do you think there's any chance you could just stop and look at this thing? God, you guys need to be aware of what's going on out here.
Anybody been out by there? I have not.
I, it was two months ago when I was out there, but that was when it was froze. So...
Well, I don't know.
Which road is it longer?
Two miles outside of Gilmore.
Trip.
What's that?
Two miles east of Gilmore. Two miles south of it.
Okay.
Where did we get, is that where we hired the excavators to come in and do some repair work?
Yeah.
We had to come in and level it. I know a lot of big levelers out here. He's lost some coal. Marcel working on that one.
Yeah.
Did he do a good job?
He's, um, got it opened up, Gary. Rick, he's got it opened up now?
Yeah, it's opened up.
He wants to plant.
But you did that, right?
No. Somebody else been in there. I think Petersons must have done something. But now you talk to Marcel, and I talked to him last night. He doesn't know for sure when he's gonna get there. He doesn't know anything about it. But this was the area. We got water running the wrong direction in the main top.
I talked to Doug about that, mm, week before last.
So he's, uh, who opened it up? Doug or?
I would've thought Doug.
No, he didn't mind it, though.
Really?
No. I think the Petersons must have worked it, man.
Oh. Cause they already submitted the bill, so I figured they just forgot about it.
Peterson said?
Mm-hmm. That's why I went ahead and got somebody else.
Well, they got this opened up so you can see down in there what, I mean, it's unreal this connection up.
Did you open it too?
Well, we opened it earlier. My guys did, too. It was a mess. We didn't have time to work it, but we still don't have time.
I just wonder if we can get anybody in there to finish. We don't really know who's doing it, do we?
No.
Okay.
But you're sure it's not?
We did talk to Marcel. He wasn't, he had a long schedule ahead of him, but that's fine.
You know, I remember all these contractors are entitled. This is...
This is secondary.
That's another thing. I do not understand why we can't have our company workers out doing the same work. You've got the machinery that's just sitting there. The guys don't have anything to do. And you keep telling me that's not possible. Why? Why can't you have our guys do it and build it just like anybody else? So we can get this stuff done? You've got the guys out there that are capable, very capable, to fix this kind of stuff. You hired them from contractors. That's what they did for eleven of them. They'd love to be doing something.
Or more than. Oh, you got time for something like that, or you get a renovation? Well, what situation? It doesn't do it in some county, but maybe we don't. Don't have time, don't have equipment, don't have a man or what?
Not right now. I mean, we don't wanna drop everything to go start doing the tail leading the dog, and that's the way some of this goes. Uh, that's the same reason you can't get a private contractor in to do repairs, is they have bigger fish to fry, or they don't wanna move in for a repair. I don't know.
How do we take care of what we gotta get done, so you let me go? Any contractor? We're, we're gonna get this foggy side. I don't know.
I was sure I had done.
But who's got it? Yeah. This is a different animal. Who's got it open right now? Yeah. I'm not sure.
Good point. We're gonna need to make a couple phone calls and find out who opened it up.
Well, I think it's Pedersen's, the way it sounds. They've sent a bill on it. And they aren't gonna do anymore. So try to other Pedersons, see if we don't want them to break out.
Problem is, he just threw it up there. The law is going wrong even with that. We need to investigate who owned it and how. But nobody's got time for all the time. That's what the money is, this little stuff that keep making money out of it.
I'll call Rick to see about why it's going the wrong way. If we just, I can't remember offhand if we've made a determination on that, why.
He knows that. He's looked at it with me, and he can't, he just shakes his head. The only way it's gonna be, check in and, uh, this is all screwed up.
Okay.
At least he was working, kinda working on it, you know?
Or who was out there, didn't you?
Yeah, alright.
I mean, we paid for it, and then...
Well, who might have opened it up, if they didn't?
Pedersen's had already paid, or been paid for what they did on the other repairs. And I said, assuming since they submitted a bill, that they were done, done. And then Gary said, well, mine's not done yet, so...
Somebody opened it up then?
I didn't know they missed it.
We'll do some checking there and see what's going on in the town.
Well, if you go out there, Paul, I don't wanna meet you out there.
We're going with Paul today on some road. Which stretch are we heading?
I don't like.
East. How long's that gonna take us?
If we can do it, uh, half hour.
Looking on the way back?
We might be able to put through there on the way back, Gary.
Just call me. I'll meet you out there.
What's your phone number?
Three, three, no, I'm gonna give you the office. Three, three, two, eighteen, seventy-five. Eighteen, seventy-five.
Eighteen, seventy-five. If it works out, we'll give you a call and drive by.
Alright.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. We have a new hire for conservation seasonal work. Curtis, let me, let me, how you pronounce it?
Rubik.
Rubik?
Good, good try.
Yeah. Is he a repeat or a new?
Um, he's used for conservation.
He was from Downeyburg.
I'm sure he did.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll second it.
We have a motion to hire Curtis at twelve dollars an hour, proceed to work maintenance starting May fourth. Any discussion? Bringing down, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. We need to set time and date for a budget amendment.
That time of the year. We've got a final one coming up. They'd like you to have them done by the end of May. So I'm looking at May eighteenth at nine AM, if that would work with you guys.
May eighteenth at nine AM.
When do you need to publish that?
Pardon?
When do you need to publish that? When do you need the info?
I'll be sending. Email out to all the departments today.
Very good.
And I'll give all the details then, but if you need to know. It'll have to be in the newspaper on the fourteenth, at least. Um, so I'll need it by next week.
We got a couple weeks anyway.
Settled May eighteenth, nine o'clock. Sound good for budget amendment? Set the date? Do our publications?
How many of them?
Second. Okay, are those in favor to set a tentative date of, like, setting a date? May ninth? May?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. See if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Set date for public hearing on codifying ordinances.
Um, I've been working on getting all of our ordinances codified, which means updating them. Um, there's been amendments, ordinances. You'll incorporate the amendment into the ordinance, make it all one again. Um, so I think we're just about ready. I'd a little more proof for it, and we'll be ready by the date. I'm suggesting, again, May eighteenth, but at nine fifteen.
Okay. That work for a bye, maybe, so?
Come on, Mary. We've discussed about this. We had a working right-of-way ornament or ordinance, and I'm not so sure we shouldn't just drop it because the state law supersedes it anyway. Uh, I don't remember. We passed an ordinance ten, twelve years ago before the state law, and now the state law has some different language in it, slightly different. And, uh, maybe we oughta look at that before we codify something that's, uh, already state law.
Okay. I'll pull it out and send you another.
It's our, our ordinance, and there's a new chapter of instructions when it passed five, six years ago.
The state law.
I'll pull it out and send you another copy of it, and let you look around and see if you can.
Because there was things that were contrary. We ran into that, uh, a year ago with, uh, EC Source.
Alright. Well, that still leave enough time to get that done, or should we back it up a little bit?
Uh, yeah, it depends on, if he doesn't need to make any changes, we're okay. But if he's gonna make...
You might be able to drop it completely, is what I'd say.
So they're okay, but we'd have to know by next week?
Yeah.
I'd want it for sure next week.
We talked about it a year ago, is we don't need both of these, and blah, 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 and we need to look at it again, yes.
Okay, we take care of that between now and next week. We still set May eighteenth at nine fifteen as the date. Okay, most of our heart? I'll second. Same with Rick. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Approval of claims. I think you've had time to review the claims. Anybody? I never wrote down the total there.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve claims of a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and six cents, and drainage of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Forty-six.
Making that a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on the claims? Anything unusual? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Oh, I guess we're down to committee reports.
Take forty, we better go.
Forty, or take Paul. Quite a lot of that, Paul.
I got a long board.
Good morning, and, uh, this morning we had two orders of business. Uh, one is approved purchase of tractor backhoe for secondary roads. I've made an abbreviated copy of the, uh, form of proposal, uh, from two manufacturers. One from Ziggler Cat, and one from, uh, Murphy, uh, John Deere in Port Dodge. Both in Port Dodge. Um, both machines are similar. Uh, one has a few more bells and whistles than the other one. Uh, in different ways, they have different additional options, because they're both, uh, machines, stock machines that they quoted us, as opposed to, uh, quoting us brand-new off the run. Uh, the, if we went brand-new off the line and ordered it, it would be months out. It would be a tier four motor with depth. Both of these are quoted or non-deaf machines. Uh, they're new machines, uh, but they're carryovers. One, uh, I would, um, note that I had an optional extended warranty requested. Either way we do this, I would recommend the extended warranty, uh, be included with the proposal. And you can see I did the high-tech stickyback cut and paste. Uh, the total for a three-ten S K from John Deere would be eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars versus, uh, uh, four-twenty F I T loader backhoe from Cat for a hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Uh, the I T is an integrated tool carrier. Uh, it comes with the tools that we spec. Uh, we have a quick attach both front and back. It's a Z lift. It's a little, uh, it's got an auto shift transmission. And, uh, when you sort it all out, it's still less than the Deere, but they, the trade-in is what, what caught Cat. Uh, short story, I'd recommend we buy the John Deere. Eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars to trade, trade both machines in.
So what year machine is this?
This is, uh, two thousand fifteen. Just a second. I didn't spec auto shift.
Didn't want the, the emission control.
No, neither one, neither machine has, they're both tier four interims.
Don't have DEF cameras? You don't have to go DEF?
This, uh, it's one of the, still fifteen.
I don't think it's.
Yeah, it's a two-fifteen model with one hour, and we probably put most of the hour on it. But, uh, it's a...
So they still don't have to have the DEF on it?
No, cause it's an interim tier four. The next run on both sides.
Oh, it's the size of it determine when it was gonna switch to DEF, and, uh...
Neither manufacturer has switched to DEF, yet they're still running on interim tier four. But the next run of backhoes, if you ordered new ones, then you would need DEF machines.
Oh, I thought they already...
No, not everything.
So a new one would be a sixteen now, or a, still a fifteen?
Uh, new one might be a fifteen. I mean, the, the model numbers is what turns the year, the breaks on these machines. But it's labeled as two thousand fifteen model, four-point-five engine E P A I T four, interim tier four.
Right.
What would that add? Ten thousand dollars?
At least.
Next time around? What we're talking about, did anybody get the email from Citizen Hall concerned because we were buying new machinery with, uh, tax money from, uh...
Oh, the new gas tax.
Yeah. As I recall, we had this in the hopper a long time before the gas tax got passed. That has nothing to do with it, to my knowledge.
Wow.
Yeah. There's been some editorials in newspaper about hiring people and buying things with that gas tax money instead of fixing roads.
What do we have for hours on those two rigs?
Man, what, what year were the John Deere in that case, just like?
John Deere was like an eighty? Eighty-seven, eighty-eight, something like that.
The case looks like, same.
Same. Uh, uh, the John Deere had substantially more hours, I wanna say. So I don't have...
Got a few more.
Uh, wait a minute. I should have it. I got it right here.
I don't know. It had nine dollars. I was looking on my email, but I didn't see it on there.
In the spec from last year, the, uh, last, last week, the nineteen eighty-seven John Deere three-ten C all-wheel-drive tractor backhoe obtained in nineteen eighty-seven, seventy-five, ninety-five hours, uh, as of March two thousand fifteen.
Right.
The other one is a nineteen eighty-eight five-eighty case tractor backhoe obtained, uh, December of nineteen eighty-eight with thirty-seven hundred and fifty-seven hours as of twelve, two thousand fourteen. Possible transmission clutch issues.
On the case?
On the case. There is some issue somewhere. We didn't crack it to find out.
I was wondering, seventy, seventy-six hundred.
Seventy-six hundred.
So we're trading two of good ones, but...
That's correct.
I was just wondering, cause, I mean, Cat was given absolutely nothing for trading the, uh, ours. It's kinda one of the condition they were in.
I think John Deere'd be okay. And it's got some issues, but...
What we asked was to evaluate them and see if we should repair it, and the answer was no. Because the repair, uh, we were in the five thousand part range, is what it might be, or might...
Might part out.
But yeah, you split it, you have to pull it back in, and all, yeah. No, both machines are good machines. Uh, the Cat appeared to have a little more room in the cab, uh, but after we, uh, demoed the John Deere, the first comment was, can they get three of them? So that's not like it's, or hated it too bad. But they'll be quick attached. We got auxiliary front and back, so we can use it as a, either one even. Uh, Cat is an integrated tool, and John Deere's will be auxiliary front and back. Quick coupler on the front for forks with the rear, uh, with an hydraulic coupler for buckets, so we could switch buckets. We can put a shaker head on the back. I see it's somebody trying to do that, uh, to buy a smaller shaker unit, uh, for the tractor backhoe. Uh, we can put a breaker on the back. We've rented one for the skid loader before. That's okay if we can get close to it, but with this, we could hang out there and, uh, and rent a, a breaker tool and, um, put a broom on the front, if brooms are in the picture. Uh, this could be one that could be modified for, for broom.
So is that a three-year warranty?
Five-year.
Oh, five. And how much does that cover, then?
It's bumper to bumper.
Really?
They're gonna have to load the trucks in with sand?
Yeah, it's similar to what we have.
Well, at one time, they had to use a ramp or something.
Right, we still use the ramp over there.
You'd still have to with us?
Um, they still use it. It's right beside the sand bunker. If they'd have to, I don't know. I know you needed the ramp in the old days to load on top of the octagons, cause they had the big grate up on top.
I'm not so sure they need to use it anymore. Really?
Eh, you should be able to reach the standard, but...
I think they do.
The question was, uh, warranty, one full year warranty with optional five-year, two thousand full machine.
Alright, two thousand dollars.
Okay. How old are units for getting rid of, Paul?
Eighty-seven and then eighty-eight.
I forgot.
Eighty-seven and then eighty-eight.
Okay. What's your desire? Looks like, uh, John Deere has a bid for about eighteen thousand dollars. I'll make a motion to purchase a John Deere three-ten S K.
Twenty-five thousand.
For, uh, eighty-two, nine, seventy-eight? Twenty-eight. Must be twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
I'm trying to read my, I'm trying to read my... Eighty-two, nine, twenty-eight. If you add seventy-nine, four, sixty-three, and thirty-four, sixty-five, then you would be...
You did that engineering lettering, apparently.
I, I did, but I didn't take enough coffee.
Rick had the motion on the floor to purchase a John Deere for eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Do I hear a second? Any other discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Next item, Paul?
Second order of business is to approve a contract for right-of-way for Project L C twenty-eight, twenty-nine oh nine. That's last year's project up here north of the old landfill. We had an accepted author to buy, and we finally got the surveying and the paper trail done to follow, uh, follow through with it. Uh, it's, uh, short of a, short tenth of an acre, seven hundredths of an acre, six hundred and fifty-one dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve contract for right-of-way project.
That's a thing, yeah. Alright. Anybody care to second that motion? By six tenths of an acre?
Sure.
One hundredth of an acre.
I think it might be a little bit more for six tenths, but...
You're right. Okay. I have a motion. Second? Purchase right-of-way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried.
It's interesting, and I'll make editorial comments after this. Over even fractions of an acre add up to some money now, when you start to look at, uh, a hundred and fifty dollars of CSR.
Alright, okay.
And, and, uh, CSR values is sixty-two, it's pasture land, so, but it's still a hundred and fifty-one dollars. I'll need chairman's signature on that. Uh, finally, uh, not on the agenda, uh, is what we've been looking for several years, is a rubber tied roller. Another county, B V County, was looking for a rubber tied roller. Uh, emailed out two weeks ago. Uh, Boone County has bought, uh, rollers in the past from Handy Gitch. Uh, they have three of them now. Um, and the B V emailed me and said, would you consider, uh, do you guys really want one? Because if we can put two on a load, we can both save money for transporting it in, but, uh...
Where they made?
They're made in Canada, up by, uh, uh, Manitoba, somewhere up Winnipeg.
Who use that, Paul?
We use it on, uh, what we like to do is roll in shoulders. Uh, once we roll shoulders up, uh, uh, that's probably what I like to see the best on it. Uh, other, other, any place where we wanna roll the rock in, uh, is where we use it. And we had limited use of our, uh, as, um, Boone County called theirs post-World War Two rollers. And, and I'm not, ours is an old D O T roller that you can't get parts for, and it's...
It's about worn out.
It's gone. I mean, you can't, uh...
It's well-known, I suppose.
And then, then, design reflects, it's, it's, uh, it is junk at best, but, uh...
What's the price of this?
Uh, and I haven't got a firm price, but I, I, uh...
Looked like that eighteen year old.
Want to get a quote with, uh, B V County. I wanted just comments and, and raise the issue. Um, but it would be, last year's Boone County for two of them was, uh...
Thirty and some.
Thirty-four, five, total for two, so seventeen-three or something like that. Seventeen thousand something. But they're not a self-propelled.
These are full behind.
They're a whole behind.
You see the switcher right here, it's a little...
Yeah. Yeah, and, and that's where...
They're even loaded with rock all the time?
Yeah, generally. You can get water, fill machines or valves. Uh, what Boone County actually did with theirs is they went and sprayed the bed liner inside.
I read that. Or maybe that was in this quote somewhere.
It was in, I forwarded an email to you guys.
That made a lot of sense. I think if you're gonna, this is a long-term thing, you'd save for forty years, you might wanna...
Yeah, I think that if you can back it inside.
They never had the, they never had the bed liner.
It's one of the biggest secrets, Danny.
But probably isn't much for drain hose, and it wouldn't drain anyway, with gravel and...
Well, I'm not sure. I can't tell you if there's drain hose. Generally, there's plug or something that you can in the tub, and, but, uh, um, that's what they've done. Uh, and, and this is all replacement that you can get parts for. Uh, the, the old D O T machine that we've had, can't.
So what would Boone County need? What, did they got three of them?
They use them, um, when, uh, heavy rock, uh, rumble strip, anything where they got loose rock, where they tear it and cut deep and lay it back in a fluff, then they roll. They have mostly gra, gravel versus limestone. So if they're tearing up and have a loose fluff, they're running, uh, rolling these with trucks, rolling behind them. Um, and they, they use them a lot this time of year. Wow. Whenever they're gonna cut and lay a pile of fluff out there, if they have rumble strips with the gravel, cut them all the way out, leave a big loose foot, then you'll get rumble strips in a hurry, rolling will help, help for a while.
Are you gonna get a brush then, um, for this backhoe?
I don't know. Um, we, with the backhoe...
There's been times where we wished we had one, but...
We have a brush, and I wanna see what, what kinda money it'd take to use what we have and modify it. See, that, for us, the lift group was, uh, and the hydraulics was all, uh, for the Cat I T end loader that we had a couple years ago. Uh, and, uh, I wanna see if we can modify it to that, if, if we can do it without reinventing the wheel. That's a possibility for us. Uh, Mr. Lippel's greatest fear is that it'd spend more time in Dakota City than Hardy if we get too many good attachments for it, but, uh...
I'm sure he does.
But I think we can, uh, trade and, yeah. No, the, the point, the point is, is, uh, we don't buy tractor backhoes very often, and this would be, uh, multi-tool. Uh, we could do a lot of different things with it, whatever we need. We generally rent before we decide to buy a permanent tool.
Are you to the point, we have to commit to Buena Vista County on this?
No, I'm gonna tell him that we're interested and we wanna quote, and we'll see where they're at with a quote. But, uh, Boone County exhausted the, uh, uh, in the last few years, trying to find anything, couldn't find anything in the tow behind. You can find all kinds of power units, but that's a whole new, uh, or a whole new round, you know, high dollar up. And we've looked now for several years, trying to find, you know, the D O T selling one on their sale, but I haven't ever seen one of them on a D O T sale anymore. And when D O T puts them on the sale, generally, they already are...
They're now.
So, so I, I don't know. This, uh, seems, uh, on one hand, it seems like a lot of money. On the other hand, uh, it's, uh...
Over forty years back.
Standard rims, it's, you know, it's not the, you know...
It's five hundred dollars a year over twenty year, forty years. I mean, you're not gonna put this...
And we, what we've been doing in the interim, uh, is, uh, we loaded a truck. If you saw where we pulled up, we just drove the loaded truck behind it, cut it, and drove a loaded truck on it again. And if you're pretty good, you can hit, hit this much of it anyway. And it, uh, it's nice to pull it. If you got moisture, that, uh, that helps the...
How wide of a unit are these things? How wide of a unit are these things?
Uh, I think it's just short of, uh-
Ten foot, maybe?
Eight foot, it's, uh, like ninety inch, I think I saw, seven and a half, that would be then.
That's about all you want for a shoulder, yeah.
Bring a sand pole and-
No, I'll bring it, uh, I, there is not a lot on the internet, I pulled the specs out on the thing, and you can either get a water filled or a ballast filled, and, and, uh, if we shared the freight on it, uh, it'd be a benefit to both of us, and it'd be, uh, it wouldn't be high US, but it'd hike, you know, hike it up, so.
Anything else from the county, what?
No, if you, uh, if you wanna take the time, we'll take a quick ride, uh, at some point, you let me know, Dave Powell and I'll, uh, give you a quick ride just to illustrate a couple of different roads out there and the needs and why.
You wanna just come out there after the meeting?
That would be fine.
Why don't we do that, we get down here, we'll come out the shed and-
Then we'll go from there, um, and then if you wanna go from beyond that, that's, that's entirely up to you, but, uh, I, I, I saw a short, a stark contrast, uh, in roads last week, and I thought, wow, this is why we do what we do, and, and, uh-
Sold by Jim White and, and, yeah, I saw it last, well, the road was close, I got curious and-
The first mile is one, and the second mile, same road, same traffic, same additions, and that's the difference.
I'm gonna ask you a question, going back to the seventies, when they corroded that, graded that one section of road, why didn't they just continue and do the next mile?
Uh, probably right of way issues, I haven't looked at that.
I didn't know what was done.
Generally, anything that wasn't done then was right of way issues, if, if somebody fought the right of way, they just said, yeah, eh, we won't do it.
Okay.
Eh, generally, but this was one of the last miles graded, and the only reason I have that comment is, is Dave Tilges was employed, and he said that this was one of the last one that, uh, he knows of that was graded, how late in the seventies, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I've driven it multiple times, I know what it's like.
Yeah, it's gonna be nothing new for you guys that are familiar with it probably, but, uh, I hadn't been down, we could also take a drive up states and see what one night of all, um,
Chicken or?
Uh, fertilizer down the road will do to one stretch that had held its own all spring until that too, so, but-
That'd be rough here for cross plows too.
Well, and as soon as you take repeated heavy loads, it'll-
It breaks it all down then, yeah.
It broke it down, broke through the crust, and once you break through the crust, you're done. Anyway, that's what I had, uh, Mr. Chair, I have a signature.
Why wouldn't the county wanna look at some of these drainage things, I mean, these contractors making good, why wouldn't the county wanna make a little money doing some of that?
Apparently the contractors aren't making enough money, I don't know if they'd be doing them, I had to get it. I had to re, repair my own tile, and it took three years to getting there, and it was this spring, you can't get anybody for a repair for, uh, for one reason or another, I don't know, uh, the timing is poor for us, uh, we were, uh, when we did this, we dropped everything else we're doing to go do a repair, because somebody wanted to insert the explanation, and the response-
Well, we would not have to do that, we, we could do it if we had the time, I mean-
What we've done is we scheduled Trish get stuff in, once we get through this framework, uh, uh, Trish will get things in that are involved in the road right of way, or our roadway that, that is draining each district with a work order, and we do a few of those then, and get them July, August, September, but we work to them at our timetable versus dropping whatever we had planned and going to do tile repair, yeah, we, there's a lot of work out there, and, and some of this, uh, I'm not sure, I don't wanna get into this morning's conversation, but I'm not sure what the repair is on this.
Oh, OD too, yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 it might be that whoever exposed it found out that the water is going, uh, what appears to be backwards or whatever, so what's the repair?
Yeah, I think if you make water run backwards and it drains your tile, it'll come.
Well, if you're close enough to a cross connection to the new, you don't make it run backwards.
Make it back up, yeah.
Because it's like, there apparently is a tile that's feeding on the downstream side, and the less resistance is to go back-
Because that's so flat probably that it can coalesce, move back and go down to the other connection.
If there was anything on it, if there was no connections downstream from the cross connection, it shouldn't, cause you would intercept anything in the cross connection. That's the only thing that I can figure out, because-
There's a cross connection.
If it's an old tile, it's an old tile, whatever it was, it was, and it could've been that there was backfall since its placement, and once you put, put a new cross connection in it, I don't know, there's so many, that's a good question from Mr. Hopper.
Yeah, yeah.
And if it's an old existing tile, as far as I know, nobody changed the grate on it, did they?
I don't know, it's older, but I don't know.
Yeah, see.
You know, the-
So it's a connection as the way I gather, or?
Well, I think they may have connected the new tile, and then it wants to feed back into that, cause that's the easiest route. This is a connection out here, isn't it, where that break is? That's dug up?
I don't know.
Well, that's what I thought, it was a connection right along the road there.
Apparently nobody wants to touch it though, Rick.
Hey, you see here, do we have a problem like this, where somebody gets, gets a crop plant, and all the contractors are busy, how do we help people?
Well, see, Carl, that's what I was gonna address, what I, I think the big issue with all these small repair, I mean, I wouldn't even call them small repairs anymore, because, you know, they're getting to be tile needs and they're bigger tiles and all, but there's connections that go into them, there's all kinds of issues, there's standing intakes, but the biggest problem I think is, if you're gonna do that kinda work, you gotta get a work order, the guy usually goes out to look at it first, so there's a trip out there, then he goes back, and he's gotta figure out, or open it up and figure out what he needs, he doesn't carry that-
Locates.
Locate, that'd be located, that's a big headache, locate would be number two, the next thing is, he's gotta go out and find out what he needs, he probably don't have that inventory of stuff.
Know that.
These guys don't know where to go to get stuff, or they gotta run around, so then they locate the parts, they go out fix it, and they find a little more problem, they don't have enough parts, and they go get, it's a very time consuming, drag out affair, and the per hour rate, you can't, they just don't make enough, I mean, they're not gonna stop running a tile machine where they order a hundred thousand for a tile, and they know they're gonna lay that tile, and they, you know, they know they're gonna need parts for that job, and it's a, it's a moneymaker, but these things are not moneymakers.
Forming problem, a minor problem.
That's about what you're running into.
You can't get anybody to come fix it, cause it's a mire.
So when you're all done and you knew what exactly you needed to, it was real simple, but to get there is several hundred dollars to even before you even started a repair.
So what's the answer to the problem?
So what would be the county rate, if the county, some counties have their own crews that fix things? How do they do it?
It's a drain.
Yeah, but I mean, it would give you the manpower for snow removal and-
Right, and they do it.
I mean, you almost need a crew that you could hire separate, but does that all year round or something.
Well, it's another year round project, though.
Well, and then when we backed off man, we followed-
Well, you may be mad at the story, but I mean, but from, from the time spring starts till harvest, late into harvest, these things keep popping up, you know, but you'd have to sign all of them to them, you know, that's how you'd keep them busy, but-
Well, it'd take-
I don't know.
Two guys and a, it'd take a two or three man crew to do this, cause you gotta have two guys there for sure.
Then you'd definitely need a good backhoe, and you'd definitely need a-
Which we probably gotta have a good backhoe.
Cause you'd have to haul dirt, there's plenty of time, and you're gonna have to, and you need a trailer to-
Well, there's places where we, we supplemented, hired gun on these, there's places we've done it, but we don't, I don't wanna get in a position where we're, we start something that we're trying to get done, and, and then pull off, cause this time of year, everybody is right now, right now, right now.
See, everybody wants it now.
It's just like building driveways, driveways come usually in the fall, three days before the harvest hits.
They can.
Now, get down, they never make that one, with the district being liable for crop loss on something and-
You can't find that driveway where you, uh-
Well, if you can't get a contractor.
There's repair, there's somebody who must've done, there's digging that was what, not a pool?
Back?
Yeah, cleared or, yeah.
I would want, except on that driveway, and I would wanna put them in-
They got it up to the edge of the road.
It would just be nice if somebody was going into business, but you'd have to, you'd have to really support that person to come around, I mean-
Well, but what should be a minimum, what should be a minimum, that's the catch.
Yeah.
You, you're gonna get seven, eight hundred dollars real, in a hurry on this with time and equipment on this, and, and how many people think that you should be fixing an intake for seven or eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, that's right, not a lot, I would pay it.
We got to get a seven or eight hundred dollar bill, so they're all thousands and thousands.
There you go, there's-
They're really trying to drive it with you now.
And then all the people mad, because you're so hyper eyes.
Okay, we have a problem, what's the solution? I mean, we can talk about it, but how are we gonna help, we got lots of drainage districts in the county, we probably have more than any county in the state of Iowa. I'm sure it's gonna be a recurring problem, we don't have contractors, county doesn't have time to do it, the local farmer doesn't wanna do it, how do we get it to copy? I think there's times in, in the year when we have ti, the county would have time to do it, like Ju- July, August, and September, late June, but like this time of year, you're working to keep the gravelers in decent shape, getting rocks spread, I can understand that, I wonder if we should, in that July, August, September area, work on some of these projects.
That's where we were gonna look at what Trish's list was.
See what we could've drawn.
Cause I mean, the main thing with county, our job is to keep the roads in shape.
And that's where we deal with the, anything that's coming close to the road, we deal with most of them near the road, anything that impacts the road, we do those.
Yeah, cause when the ditch sits full of water, it impacts the road condition worse.
If it's taking dirt and it's starting to take part of the shoulder, I mean, the one brand new vein down there by a thinking schoolhouse in the corner, we went back in that after other contractors had attempted repairs a couple of times, we did it again, uh-
Well, and if, you know, if there comes a time when these, and I don't know if they're local, maybe tiling projects slow down, they've tiled enough for a while, or the prices get low enough, then all of a sudden these guys start to have more time to do a few of these jobs, I mean, we got two new guys over in Wright County that are working over, Spidey Wright County jumping all over, it's cause they've been doing a lot of work for us over on the east side, and they're doing some good work, it's just, you hope some new people get started to replace the ones that are retiring, you know, and-
What you need is one guy running up front to do all the-
Line stuff up.
Line stuff up, and then you have it, uh, some kind of a single or tandem truck pulling a trailer with a mini excavator or a tractor backhoe, then you have another piece of equipment that's got all your fittings, a fitting truck.
That's what you need.
And concrete, sack creek, you know, and you just blow in, blow out, and, and if they would work on those things, uh, they can do it much more economically than we can.
But the county does good work and some of these contractors don't, and, I don't know.
Maybe what could work, if you had two counties working together, you could work something out to get something like, have an individual that just does that, but it's high risk, cause there's so much cost involved in the equipment, keeping that guy, I mean, what's to keep him there? I don't know, it's just kind of a hard problem.
Again, we, uh, we pull, and we don't have a contrary popular opinion, we don't have a lot of idle time, and we could add staff, but-
And you, and you start looking-
Not necessarily-
You start looking around, there's more and more backhoes sitting in farmers' yards than what you'd think, I mean-
And, and, and why is that?
Because they're just doing it themselves.
They're trading value.
Yeah.
Well, you're just gonna do your own, you can go out and do that, you can run to town, get your parts and-
In terms of the contractor, even if I had a backhoe, I could try to troubleshoot the major share of the problem and show the contractor, here's the problem, and I have it exposed, here's what we need to do to fix it, and it would take some of the spinning wheels contract.
Well, a good example would be Paul Kraft over in Wright County, he bought an excavator and he's got, and he's done some tiling and stuff, and now like the Peaks and others, they all go to his farm on the backside, which, I mean, he's got a complete warehouse.
Warehouse.
Oh my God, you wouldn't believe this, but, but you know, he, to, to have the stuff on hand on Saturdays or Sundays or whenever you wanna do, he about had, I mean, it's unbelievable how much stuff he, so most young guys couldn't afford to have that inventory, is what I'm, is probably the problem.
We don't, we invent stuff mainly for intakes and whatever, but we find ourselves running Eagle Robes or Ford Dodge a lot, just for-
He could run two trips, two times just on the same project.
And then as soon as you start doing that, who do you build that to?
I know, I know.
And that's the difficulty of a repair, uh, anything repaired versus new, if you-
Gary said it too, he said these guys are doing tile, and they don't wanna do these projects, and we all know it, so, anyway.
We'll keep trying. Andy Elphoss, make sure, alright, let's start with reports, Jerry?
Okay, interesting wait for me, Wednesday we had our, um, CSS meeting in New Hampton, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion of what's coming in the future, I guess I'm not, wasn't totally aware how quickly things are changing, so I'm gonna try to explain this the best I can, what little knowledge I have, it appears now that we are going to work with managed care organizations, MCOs, and you guys have heard this, of course, and the model the governor's looked at is the one in Kansas, and that's kinda how they're set up and run, so if this mirrors that at all, there's looks to be about sixteen MCOs that are gonna do RFPs to try and get the contract for mental health managed care. That being said, they're supposed to submit that by July first, which is pretty darn quick, and then, at that time, they would probably pick between two and four providers, they don't think they'll pick as low as two, because they think even though it's in the healthcare reform, you know, if you, if you have too many providers and one of them decides to bail out, all of a sudden you only had one, so a pretty good indication, there'll be at least three or four MCOs, managed care organizations, that are gonna control the pool of money, they are saying that the way to treat mental health care patients, seventy five percent of it should go through Medicaid, so that leaves twenty five percent of the clients that need to be really dealt with through these MCOs, of that, five percent of the total mental health patients account for seventy five percent of the cost, so that's where these mental health cares are gonna go after trying to find savings, that's gonna be their mission, more or less. So, they're gonna come into the state, and they're gonna deal with the system we have today, every county has their office, every county has their, well, we have, as an example, I talked to Michelle DeRiva the other day too, IPOs, which would be independent, um, providers, you know, we deal with probably twenty three providers, our twenty three county region has at least twenty three providers that we deal with, independent ones, so, these MCOs aren't gonna wanna deal with twenty three providers, they're gonna wanna work with ACOs, and you've heard of those, of course, I can't tell if it, it's a county, what is ACO, it's, um, well, it's like a unity point, I've lost my thought already, this is pretty complicated, so anyway, you got your unity points, you, you, the ACOs are the big outfits that are established, they have the money, they have the database, they have, um, well, they just have connections, you know, and so-
They were like Barry Hope the other day when he was in here.
Yeah, I don't, North Lady would be an ACO side, they might be, but that being said, Bob is, of course, nervous, cause it's gonna change, I mean, basically, the role of CSS is gonna be maybe nothing, maybe next to nothing, if we do nothing, and this goes along, I think all your county offices are gonna change, I think the people, I asked, I talked to Michelle, or Kathy on Monday, or Friday after all this, I mean, all these people are looking for jobs, cause this thing is, I don't know if this thing's gonna hold together, it's gonna change, um, Jim, arbitrary, arbiter, I think it was Dean from Clear Lake, from, um, what's that called up there, help me out, the home, opportunity village, or no?
Yeah, that's it.
Opportunity Village, him, people like him, and he's, they've already come to conclusion, they can't worry about what's gonna happen, they can't change what's gonna happen, they're just gonna be ready to do the best job they can and accept what comes their way, so, that being said, the system is gonna move quickly. Now, Bob, we had a lengthy discussion about what direction we wanna do, do we just sit back and let it happen, which I think a lot of people are doing, or do we try to become an ACO, well, there was a big discussion, of course, as you could tell, cause we're not really to that point, we haven't got commitments from anybody, you'd have to go out to these IPOs, these independent providers, and, and get them all to sign on to be part of your ACO, well, in sixty days, I don't think we can do that, but we let them go ahead, and we gave permission to go ahead and investigate, see what the options might be, and talking to Michelle, talking to all these, they've already been getting letters from these big, um, from these managed care, they want, they want them to sign on a, ahead of time, well, nobody knows what to do or what direction you're gonna go until these, um, RFPs are written, and you find out who's, who becomes the, see, it's, part of the MCOs, what they're trying to do is gather information, see how lucrative it would be to come to state of Ireland and offer a plan, so they're reaching out to all these agencies to see what, how quickly they could get a connection, you know, get them to come on board with them, so, either way, and when we got ready to vote to allow Bob to go ahead and try to investigate this ACO thing, I said, Bob, before we vote on this, and we did vote- So either way, and when we got ready to vote to allow Bob to go ahead and try to investigate this ACO thing, I said, Bob, before we vote on this, and we did vote to let him look into it, but he don't have a lot of time. I said, even if we were an ACO, what role does CS, or M, or CSS gonna have in this? And it's gonna be minimal, because we aren't gonna control the money. The money will be going to these MCOs. We aren't gonna rewrite the contracts with these, we're working with individual, um, you know, providers, because it's gonna be an ACO. So it looks to me like, I'm getting the feeling we're gonna be, we're gonna be pushed out of the, you know, healthcare industry quite rapidly, unless something changes and they can't meet these deadlines.
How are they gonna fund it?
Well, the money that comes from the county that we, that we have that funded, it's gonna go into the, go to these MCA, MCOs. And they're gonna basically man, they're gonna have their own actuaries, they're gonna have their own accountants, they're gonna have their own.
But the state's gonna pick three or four of these?
They're gonna pick, after those RFPs come out, they're gonna pick three or, I, I assume it'll probably be three. I don't know that they're gonna look for, but I think they'll have more than two, because if one drops out for some reason. But there's a lot of unknown to the whole, I mean, I just, it, I think that, when I got done with that meeting, I spoke quite a bit at the meeting, but I think most people were just shell shocked. Didn't really know what the answer, there is no answer, because I don't think we're gonna have a lot of say in it. It's just not gonna be what we, and I really think, when it was all said and done, when we were asked to redesign our reg- informed regions, I think that step was just this opening step to get us to accept and realize change is coming. I, I think that just opened the door. You know, they wanted us to, you know, save money, share resources, and we're doing that. But I don't think that was the all, this isn't the ultimate goal.
That's what's evolved.
I think it's valid, it's either evolved that quickly, or it was the direction we needed to start to get this thing in motion.
So I guess if you go back to the Kansas model that they're going after, is that directed all by the state in Kansas?
See, I don't know enough about the dangers, but I believe it is. I think that's what they're looking at. They figure they're gonna have savings. You know, when you're dealing with that amount of money with a small percentage of people, they're figuring there's gonna be magnitude of savings. And if they're gonna keep the property tax relief, if they're gonna keep lower, low, you know, with lower just per capital on, that we pay, we're down to thirty-eight twelve. I mean, all these things, the money's just not gonna be there going forward. The problem I'm worried about is if these MCOs come in and they have these, look at these ACOs, and they say, this is the amount of care this person is entitled to. And maybe this person's been getting a bit better care than what he's gonna get, or she or he or she will get, does that burden fall back onto the counties? Who's gonna pick that up? But you talked to this Jim, you talked to Ca- I, I think everybody's open to any kinda job opportunities. Cause I think if these things, those MCOs get selected, and then they come to your agencies and you're a good person, they're gonna be looking to hire you to do some of this work. But are they gonna have an office in the county or they gonna, I mean, there's so many questions that are unanswered. And it's on a short time there, you know, this is supposed to be the first of January. That gives them six months from the time of those RFPs to develop their plan and get it going. We'll wait and see.
Aren't they already moving people out of the home up there?
They are, they are.
That's what I was visiting with someone and, you know, they take them out of the setting they've been in for.
See, everything is processed from depth to ends. So it's not, we're not gonna reverse the pro, the trend.
Oh no, you can't, you can't.
I mean, we had rate adjustments for opportunity village up there. Well, the remaining clients are a lot, because of the small numbers, the cost is going, going up and up until they get into their home. And there is a transition period, which we're going through, but, um, it's just not, it's not an easy process, but it's kinda being forced, it's gonna happen. So I really don't know what our CSS board's gonna look like in two years. It kinda, I don't know, it just kinda hit everybody. You could tell the whole crowd was kinda, um, they.
What about these counties that have only three to their organization that reach, there's some of them that, we, we're large enough to.
Well, we were hoping maybe we had a little clout and we could maybe, he's gonna go out to all those, um, IPO, those independent, independent providers, see if they wanna unify and work as an A, as an ACO. But I don't think he's gonna have, I think Bob just is trying so hard to not lose the vision we, of course, we run. I think this thing is gonna go right over the top of us now. I mean, I guess I totally didn't understand how quickly this was gonna be implemented, but it's, it's on a short timetable.
We can run on that CCMS board and you can see the handwriting on that. And then, uh, we had meetings for that board at your chairman, the ATC board or whatever, the putting all that together. Uh, one of the, we looked at was the state of Kansas, their director, Phil Peterson's counterpart came up and presented how they, uh, do things. Did things, so apparently that's the one the state is looking at also.
Yeah, she knows, I missed a meeting on that, I wish I would've went now, but I think that's what they're, they're really leaning hard on that model. But it's totally different than the way we deliver services.
But you know, you go back, when I was first on the board, Iowa was one of the few states in the union where the counties were involved in mental health. It was all state around every place else.
Seeing that's why the rear driver is pushing to get out of it. Another, another interesting tidbit, since we got a little time, but it was brought up that, you know, it's the philosophy of the state and how we handle things. But to some degree, it's also our weather, I've come to believe, but they said Arizona has ten thousand nursing home beds. You know how many nursing home beds in the state of Iowa? Thirty thousand. So what do we do if our pa- we tend to put them into facilities like that, instead of carrying them yourself. And the weather's bad here too, I figured the weather's bad.
The weather, that's what came in with that.
You know, a lot of elderly people can live on, well, a lot of elderly people can live on their own.
Well, it's nice weather. When you got ice and snow and cold, you know, you're concerned about grandma living out in four miles of ground road by herself.
But that was kind of an inter, I mean, it's just the way we've delivered care to the elderly and to the aging, until the, it's just different than what other areas are doing.
Yeah.
So I think you need to be aware, there's gonna be some changes. I, Peggy's, I talked to her the other day too, a little bit, and there isn't a whole lot we could do. I mean, right Peggy, I mean, I don't know what our choices are. My biggest concerns probably are, is that thirty-eight twelve gonna be enough? Are we gonna have to go back up on that? Are we gonna have to cover things that people are getting that these MCOs won't cover? Who's gonna, I mean, that's what Bob says, who's gonna pick it up? Or I guess it don't get picked up. I mean, our budgets aren't gonna get any easier going forward.
Some of the regions, the counties are already at the maximum, and they had to cut services to.
That's probably what you're going to do. We are fortunate that way. But you know, there are, were a couple of counties that put in more than thirty-eight twelve, and they should've been, they didn't need to be putting it in yet, so. But I'll let you know as it goes, but I, I really think Bob will have a hard time. I mean, I don't think you can form an ACO in sixty days. And you can't get, and the thing is, so, some of these independent producer, or, um, people that we work with may have already signed on. And they may be signing on in the next thirty days with an agent or an ACO to get delivered services, so. It's kinda being torn apart, I don't think he's gonna have time to really put something together. So, anyway, that's where it's at. And then on Thursday, we had our meeting with CFR. And on a brighter note, we paid off our loan on the Ames facility, and we took a picture cutting the mortgage up and celebrated cake, I guess. Um, this one was, where am I at? I got, oh, here we go. This was Webster City, that was at five o'clock on Thursday. The other one was at New Hampton. So we had a good month in March, our revenue or expenses were a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We had a settlement with, um, Magellan, so that was like fifty thousand of it. So we've been averaging close to a hundred thousand quite regularly, except for some down, like when there's months when there's five pay, or three pay periods. So that kinda brings your cash flow down. But we're still looking at some options for building. I think our best option probably would be to add on in Fort Dodge where we're at, because we're already established.
North of town.
Yeah, I think that's the cheapest op- option. So I think we're leaning and looking at some options on that, but. Other than that, Michelle went, did a PowerPoint, Carl would've enjoyed this, did a PowerPoint on her goals and objectives that we wrote up, sat down with her. And it was amazing to see how many of them we met, and just like Ronnie Grants, he was trying to write at least three new ones, we wrote ten. And you know, we worked with this, our biggest, our biggest concern, you had his personnel staff turnover, it's running about forty-five percent. But in the field we're in, and the low starting pay, what happens? These people get established and then they move on to hospitals and clinics and other places, you know, cause they're getting higher pay. So trying to figure out where to retain some of these people a little longer. You know, the main core people we can retain, but with, the work, the caseworkers are the ones that's getting really hard to keep on running, so. And, um, I don't know, just, everything's doing well except the psych part. We're still struggling a little bit on the psychology part of it, which we're always gonna struggle, in the mental health side of it, because it's just, you know, it's just like it is. It's very expensive to, to treat people in that area, so. But we're looking good, so fortunately, they're doing well.
The whole two million dollars to pay.
Yeah.
It's a great turn of the wheel.
Yeah, it's really been, it's, everybody really enjoys going, I mean, we have four boards and everybody enjoys going to meetings, you know, you're gonna have a good meeting, so. So as far as CFR is concerned, you know, she said she's been getting, um, requests to sign on with, she's just waiting till this, this, this mental health thing kinda strings along, finds out what's really gonna play. You hate to commit to somebody and then find out you'd been better off committing somewhere else, so. That's why I think Bob will have no luck getting everybody to commit, cause nobody knows what direction they really wanna go to, so. But I think they're, they're gonna be like Clear Lake, they're just gonna be ready and do, provide a service that's the best service for the least cost they can, and work with whatever comes. That's the attitude about half half. Whatever's gonna be out there, you gotta be ready to show what your service, what you provide and make sure you deliver it at the cost you say you can do it, so. That's all I got.
Well, you got a good guy looking at it, Bob, like a pretty sharp individual.
He'll, he'll really listen to best direction it can go, but it's probably not gonna be the choices we thought we were gonna make. It's just gonna kinda be dictated, so.
The games change a lot.
Bob's even been down to some of these ETC meetings, working closely with those people. He's affected statewide.
You bet. Okay, Rick?
Well, I had a meeting Monday afternoon with Preston from USDA and Linda Freders. Carl was there also, we're trying to line up some federal grant dollars for the LEC. What we looked at was trying to keep it simple and just taking the dispatch furniture or equipment stands, that are ADA compliant, that go up and down and all that stuff. It's about a forty-seven thousand dollar piece of equipment. They had a maximum grant of fifty thousand. They say the chances of getting the full amount are slim, but, uh, they're gonna pursue that, that grant in that area. And that's still a meeting ahead.
Uh, let's see, on Tuesday, I had to go look at a couple of drainage issues and, and kind of get where a couple of bank pipes are washed out and one of them's laying down in the creek. And on the twenty-second, I had de-cap Wright County. Uh, folks out of Wright County have, uh, put an additional five thousand. We were funding them for five thousand and it's, it'll make it ten thousand now. We granted that and mental health and schools, we started off with a contract from Magellan for ninety-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. And next year, they've jumped up to two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. They, they're getting plenty of recommendations from the principals in school, but, I don't know, we granted seventy-five thousand additional, just half of what they asked for, but.
Where does that money come from?
Uh, it's a state, uh.
It's state money, it isn't county money, is it?
No, 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 it, it's Department of Human Services.
Yeah.
Yeah. Money, so, but, uh.
So you granted an increase of seventy-five thousand, is that what you're saying, Carl?
Yeah, for a million schools.
Okay, okay.
And then, um, the twenty-third, I was with Harley, not at, um, Sister Sarah. That's quite a, quite an undertaking, she's, man, from two hundred a month to forty-two thousand meals in a month, like.
Cute.
Lot of people there. There was, uh, FBA lady from Washington, New York, she was there.
Yeah, they had good things to say, it's her and also a gal that's, but the new state director or whatever, Iowa's one of the better states of, for FBA for starting small businesses. And you think about it, that this lady started that small, and you gotta have the accounting, you gotta get the packaging. It's just a bit mind boggling to figure out how she could go from that to forty thousand in a short three years. Move, uh, it's, uh, three years of taking, she had to have some real good support on how to figure that out. And I'm sure the state has people there to do, help her, you know.
She started out working with a small business organization, they used to advise her. Lisa Schenkaff locally here, when they helped her.
Couldn't give her five dollars or something, but boy, I don't know if I could eat all that, but there's a lot of food in them containers.
I think she's in the running for a national award too.
She is.
Supposed to be announced the fourteenth of May.
Yes.
Was it?
May.
May?
Yeah, it's impressive with a, got a building inside a building.
Yeah, they've revitalized, built it up, empty and talented.
Yeah.
Made it into a nice, so.
They got a lot of nice equipment in there, I'll tell you.
Yeah. Well, and they created new jobs that are in a clean environment, I mean, it's a lot of the good.
To work there, you have to wear haircuts. So it didn't work.
Yep.
Okay, well, I was with Mark Thursday also at Sisters. The governor was there and gave a good little speech and, uh, it was well-represented. Lisa was worried about having people there, I think she had too many people there, it was, we went to group. Okay, on Tuesday, uh, the twenty-first, John Torbert and I met at, uh, Sack County Law Enforcement Center with the BB Kelhun and Sack County. They had their attorneys there, you know, and it's kinda like herding cats, I mean, you got three attorneys. And all we wanted was them to sign off on our letter for raising money. Uh, I, I guess I don't understand their philosophy or whatever. I felt like there's a lot of mistrust for the IDDA, uh, that we were somehow gonna take this money and run to Cuba or something, I don't know. But they were very specific that we wanted to, you know, an IDA has its board and its board makes the decisions. And they wanted us to usurp that and give it to them or something. But we worked it out. John and I met for lunch in, uh, Rockwell City before the meeting and talking about it. And I says, well, how long will this meeting take, you think, for them to make a few minor changes to this letter? He said, oh, a half hour and we'll be out of there. Two hours later, we left. But, uh, but then they changed the resolution a little bit that was attached, but I think we got everything all worked out, uh, so that, uh, the letter will go out. IDDA will collect the funds, set up a separate account, what we had planned to do anyway, and, uh, to reimburse the attorneys that are working on this. So we went around the room and you take the three counties and what they have, attorney bills they have so far from their drainage attorneys and IDDA, you're well over fifty thousand dollars.
Already.
But the one attorney, uh, I think he's from Kelhun County, I'm not positive. But he had a, a donor there who wanted to give forty-five thousand dollars, but he wanted to be able to write it off and go through a, what is it, five oh three C type deal.
Yeah.
So I think you can do that, you can give it to the Farm Bureau and the Farm Bureau will then reimburse us, so. I think there's a money and support out there to help pay for this thing.
So any idea like those three counties, what those drainage districts are gonna have to pay? I mean, it'll be, it'll be higher than that, most counties will, I mean, they're gonna have a big share of this, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's.
Southern, Kelhun County's got a, like, a little pittance of a district. You know, I think Sack has probably got.
Majority of it.
The majority of it.
But they've had to talk to their farmers and let them know what's going on, because they're ultimately gonna pay for some of this, aren't they?
They're, they're trying to. They're, they're trying to, Sack County's gonna kinda be their auditor, is gonna take care of reimbursing the attorneys, so... They'll let us know what their bills are, and then we'll...
So, any pool of monies that are donated, or like what we're doing, or individuals will be used first, probably?
IDDA, and then go to them, uh, well, IDDA will pay off our attorney, and, uh, then it...
Okay.
And then...
Like you said, the attorneys are gonna get rich over this deal.
You bet, you bet.
Yeah.
And the more they get involved, the more they're gonna, everybody gets a cut on it.
So Peggy, you should be getting a letter from Sack County Auditor...
Tim Dollar.
With, uh, she's gonna kinda do the, the paperwork and so forth there for that. And they're gonna send it to all the counties, and then they, the three counties, uh, those are supervisors, uh, decided they're gonna call each county. So Carl will probably be getting a call from one of them, wanting them to support the five thousand and three years deal. Cause it affects everybody, and it, uh...
It will.
Just because you have drainage, there's other things that are involved, though.
So, they're gonna be statewide with the collections?
Yeah, hopefully, see how it goes.
Yeah, hopefully, that last meeting we had down in ISAC with, we had presentations on drainage, we had presentations on water sheds, and two different groups in there. If someone went to sleep while they was talking about drainage, someone went to sleep and talked about, it'd be hard to get everybody involved, but it's very important to do so.
Well, like the guy said, for, I think, Sack County, or any, probably D V County too, there's certain parts of the county that has drainage, but you get over in that hill and park, he says, "Those people have tile in there, but they're not in the drainage district, they're, you know, tile, tiles, and what have you, but..." They're affected also, they might not really think so, but...
The two counties that don't have a drainage district, the whole county, Southeast Iowa.
All three of those counties are in the Iowa Drainage District, so she's not, yeah, that's good at least.
Yeah.
So, they shouldn't be afraid of, I mean, it's surprising they were that worried about it, but that's what lawyers do, too, make you worry.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, uh, that evening, we had our landfill meeting in Fort Dodge, and we approved the purchase of a, a tractor, a Bow Mag. Uh, and then, uh, we approved more engineering to actually do a survey of the landfill and make sure everything is copacetic there. Uh, still trying to get a building design, uh, one of the engineering firms would design the building, but he didn't wanna do anything with the mechanical part of it, so they were, well, he should, he's gonna design the building, he should take care of the mechanical and electrical and all that also, so we tabled that for another month. Most of the counties are, uh, doing the spring cleanup, although they don't get a discount at the landfill. Uh, we had, uh, inspection from the DNR at the landfill, I'm sure that's a preliminary one, to get to the AG to see how we're doing, and, uh, our manager there, Fitchy, had never been through such a vigorous inspection. They were looking for a broken cranny, and, and it was a good inspection, uh... So, we, that's gonna, gonna help us when, uh, AG determines our penalty. Uh, and then, the Deb Watson lawsuit was settled, and, uh, so the insurance company offered her the fifteen thousand dollars if we would give up the ninety thousand for sandover payment that her and Grill had. And, uh, well, to get ninety thousand dollars, you're probably never gonna get it, so, that's settled. And then, on Wednesday, we had our Midas Board meeting in Fort Dodge, and, uh, went over the budget, and, uh, I guess the, the biggest thing there was, we approved the, uh, infrastructure loan or application for a new bus barn here in Humboldt, you know, we've talked about that before, it's gonna be out by the new water tower. So, uh, you know, we built one in, uh, Webster City, and last year, one in Clarion, so Humboldt's gonna get the next one, probably be this summer or fall that that'll be built.
Probably best is the late, I think it's building up the, you know?
About a million dollars.
Crazy, oh, wow.
Jeez.
So, we got the financial aid of, uh, eight hundred thousand, and then we'll have to come up with the, the two hundred thousand.
That's quite a building.
Yeah, no, they need nice facilities, it'll probably hold, probably a few buses or whatever they got in the fleet.
That might as well.
Yeah.
Sounds high, I was in school, bus barn wasn't anything near that, it's fourteen.
That probably is a four hundred thousand, was that a four hundred thousand dollars, or was it?
It was, I can't remember now.
When I was there, between four to seven hundred thousand.
Okay, that's a little bit short.
Yeah, but I hope it's not a million.
Yeah, and then Sisters on Thursday, and that was it.
Okay, I started out, I was at Rick, three o'clock, I see Preston sanctioned on the loan situation or grant, I think you talked about that. And then before that, I had an ETC conference call, and thanks, Harlan, for getting me on this committee. Uh, this committee consists of just advisory committee for the IC board, which is really the ISAC board, I believe, same thing. And that advisory committee is made up of three people from Iowa's community service organizations, and technology people, and general membership. Anyway, we had a conference call in the afternoon, prior to a board meeting on Thursday, to talk about revising the twenty-eighty agreement, just mainly cleaned up a lot of the stuff that's gonna be recommended to the ISAC board. And, this committee has three main parts, they have three different committees, subcommittees, operations committee, a compliance committee, and a finance committee, and that's really the nuts and bolts of the organization. They in turn go out and get other members from the state of Iowa to be on those, they're the ones that make all the recommendations to us. We go over that, make recommendations to these guys. And, it's basically just dealing with technology, and trying to build a network for these communications to...